All right. Good evening, everyone. We're going to call to order the November 3, 2014 city council meeting. And first on our agenda, we are privileged to have Oscar Erlich here to lead us in Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Erlich.
Well, um, will the audience please rise? Will you please join me in singing the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Oscar, how are you?
Good.
Wonderful. Okay, why don't you tell us a little about yourself? What grade are you in? What school do you go to?
Um, I'm in fifth grade and I go to Singer.
And who's your teacher?
Ms. Sinclair.
Ms. Sinclair. Are you going to survive this year with Ms. Sinclair? She's pretty mean. You think she's watching? My son had Ms. Sinclair, so I'm teasing. So what's your favorite part? What's your favorite class? What do you like studying the most?
Science.
Science? Nice. Why do you like science?
Um, because right now we're building terrariums and aquariums.
What's the difference between a terrarium and an aquarium?
Terrarium is for land animals and aquarium is for water animals.
A plus?
Yeah.
A plus. We'll give you an A plus. Ms. Sinclair needs, tell her to call me and I'll tell her A plus. So what do you like to do outside of school?
Um, ride my bike around, stuff like that.
Okay. I'm going to do my, I'm going to make you keep talking until you smile at me. There we go.
Working on it.
I'm trying hard. All right. Council, you guys got anything? Any questions for him?
No.
So, uh, who brought you tonight? Who's here with you? Did you introduce them to us?
Uh, my mom, my dad, and my grandma.
That's a lot of fun. Thank you, guys, for bringing them tonight. So anyway, thanks for being here. And I'll tell you what, I'm going to run down there and we're going to take a quick picture. Okay? Next on our agenda is that we have a proclamation. It's a proclamation for the Extra Mile Foundation. And this is our second year participating in the Extra Mile Foundation. And it's all about honoring individuals and organizations that go above and beyond to try and make our community better. So here's our proclamation. Whereas Stillwater is a community which acknowledges that a special vibrancy exists within the entire community when its individual citizens collectively go the extra mile in personal effort, volunteerism, and service. And whereas Stillwater is a community which encourages its citizens to maximize their personal contribution to the community by giving of themselves wholeheartedly and with total effort, commitment, and conviction to their individual ambitions, family, friends, and community. And whereas Stillwater is a community that chooses to shine a light on and celebrate individuals and organizations within its community who go the extra mile in order to make a difference and lift up fellow members of their community. And whereas Stillwater acknowledges the mission of the Extra Mile America Foundation to create 500 extra mile cities in America and is proud to support Extra Mile Day. Now therefore, I, John Bartley, Mayor of the City of Stillwater, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim November 1, 2014 to be Extra Mile Day and urge every individual in the community to take time on this day to not only go the extra mile in his or her own life, but to also acknowledge those that are inspirational in their efforts and commitment to make their organizations, families, community, country, or world a better place. And as a shameless plug, we have a program here in Stillwater called the City Council Citizen Achievement, or Acknowledgement Award. And that is where we're looking for people to be nominated by their friends or family. And these are the people that, that do something good for our community, that do the work that make our community special. They may not be the ones that are the chairman of that board or is up, is up speaking all the time. And we may not know them, but they're the ones that are actually making our community better. So if you, if you know of someone in our community that is doing that, that is making our community better, and they may not be searching for that limelight or the pat on the back, but you know they deserve that pat on the back, tell you what, please get hold of Patty Osmus in the city manager's office or get online at stillwater.org and fill out that quick little nomination form. It, it's really pretty special. All right. That's going to take us into the consent docket. And we have items A, B, and C. You know what? I do it every time. Vice Mayor Weaver is not with us tonight, and I need to make that announcement. So he is not with us. All votes will be four potential votes cast. All right. Now we've got items A, B, and C on the consent docket. Does anyone wish to remove any item off the consent docket?
No, sir.
No, sir.
Their motion on the consent docket.
Motion to approve. My mic's way back here. It's normally up here.
Second.
All right. We have a motion, a second to approve the consent docket. And that is approved four to zero. That's going to take us down to item number five, and that's a public comment on agenda items, not scheduled public hearing. And we do have, uh, one, two, three people that have signed up, all to speak on our general order item B on the tobacco-free presentation that'll be coming up. We do have three people that have signed up to speak. The first one that I have is Becky Taylor.
Karen, can I request that three of us come together?
Yes, that'd be fine. And if you guys would please, please state your name and address, and then we proceed.
Okay. Thank you. I'm Suzie Harrington. I live at 917 South Springdale here in Stillwater, very proud homeowner. And I want to thank Councilor Nahara for bringing this issue to, to the docket. It's really an important issue. We began the conversation this summer as we had hoped to bring some grant dollars into our community through the Certified Healthy Communities Grant through the state of Oklahoma and realized that we didn't even qualify because we don't have this tobacco ordinance. So we began the conversations, and I must say that I was really surprised that we didn't qualify. And you'll hear more about the ordinance from Becky Taylor in just a moment. So I'm a new, new to the area. I came from Washington, DC. I'm the Chief Wellness Officer at Oklahoma State University and was so impressed with the forward-thinking of our state of Oklahoma, which it may surprise you, but surprised me, I was very, very happy. Part of my job description is to lead the state and our communities in wellness, in addition to leading Oklahoma State University. But what impressed me so much was that Oklahoma State University is the first tobacco-free health, uh, university system, tobacco-free, for our whole system in 2008, and it was student-driven. I was so impressed, and my colleagues nationally were incredibly impressed and said, "How did we do it?" Also, Oklahoma State University is America's healthiest campus. We're quite proud of that. And so I was really surprised when our wonderful city, which is home to our 5,000 employees and our 25,000 students, at least temporarily, had, had a narrower scope. And even Oklahoma City's 151 parks are tobacco-free, not smoke-free, and 42 cities within Oklahoma are also tobacco-free. So I wanted to also say that since Oklahoma, since OSU became tobacco-free, that our tobacco, our smoking rate, our self-report smoking rate has actually dropped to 6%, which is one-half of the Healthy People 2020 goal, which is one-third of what this, the national goal is, or average is, and is also one-quarter of what this Oklahoma average is. So it made a huge difference. We often hear that a policy enforcement is a problem. 95% of the folks are neither tobacco-free or want to quit or have quit. So there's only a 5% small majority, and you'll hear more about how that was figured out from, from Dr. Croft in just a moment. So what this does is it actually empowers folks that are tobacco-free or want to be tobacco-free to self-enforce. So then enforcement becomes kind of a non-issue, kind of like Y2K was such a non-issue. So I just want to close. As, as Chief Wellness Officer, I always say everything in moderation. Mayor Bartley and I were talking a little bit, even Sonic Tater Tot, you can have those in moderation. But I do always clarify that it's tobacco and illicit drugs are not, there is no healthy moderation for both of those, those things. And so I suggest that while I appreciate the ordinance as it is, that we don't stop here and that we really go for the gold. And again, Becky Taylor will talk about that. I was just talking in the back that our city is at such a tipping point. We are such a fabulous city, but we could do, do more. And so I just want to recommend that we go for the gold. Thank you.
Hi. I'm Julie Croft. Live at One Windsor Circle. I come as a mom, as a faculty member in health promotion, as the Director of the Master of Public Health Program at OSU. And I'm just going to give you a little bit of information, some statistics, and I promise I won't bore you, you won't fall asleep. My students stay awake, you can do it. So tobacco use is the leading preventable cause of death. And cigarettes are responsible for one in five deaths annually. Let's break that down to Oklahoma a little bit. So we have 16 Oklahomans who die each day from tobacco-related illness. That's 5,840 Oklahomans every year. That's more than OSU's freshman class in 2012. That's more than our K through 12 population in Stillwater Public Schools. Tobacco use is a huge financial problem in the US. It costs more than $289 billion per year. That's $133 billion in direct medical care and $156 billion in lost productivity, and that does not account for secondhand smoke. So what does that mean for our state? Oklahoma's portion of that is $2.7 billion. And for Stillwater, breaking it down even further, that's $32 million. For our city, that's nearly $700 per Stillwater resident in tobacco-related illness. Our state is among the fourth highest smoking rate in the nation. And I'm going to kind of skip through some of the smoking rates, but we exceed the national average, right? For youth, for adults. So for our adults in Payne County, 81.7% do not smoke, right? So that's, it's a good majority. And then we know nationally that nearly 70% of smokers want to quit smoking. So this is where Suzie's number of 95% comes from. Most people either don't smoke or they want to quit smoking. Where Oklahoma is unique, and where I would like to see this ordinance pushed, is on smokeless tobacco. 14% of men in our state use smokeless tobacco. National average is 6%. And you know when it starts? It starts before 18. 80% of tobacco use starts before the age of 18. That's illegal use, but they get it anyhow. 22% of our young boys are using smokeless tobacco. National average is 12%. So nearly a quarter of our boys are using tobacco illegally. So sale restrictions are not enough. We need to prevent modeling of use by restricting where people can use smokeless tobacco, and we need to restrict locations where youth can use. Worldwide, compliance with smoke-free laws is high. The World Health Organization reports that the United Kingdom achieved a 95, 98% compliance within a year of the law's passing. And in Ireland, it was 94% within one year. Smoke-free laws are popular. Legislation becomes more popular after it's been implemented. Smoke-free legislation was implemented in New York State and support increased from 64% to 74%. In Ireland, from 67% to 82%. And in New Zealand, from 61% to 82%. Further, there's not one single scientifically objective study that has found any negative economic impact from smoke-free legislation. Objective, peer-reviewed studies have consistently found that smoke-free laws have either neutral or positive impact on business, including those in hospitality and catering sector. On to Becky.
Good evening. My name's Becky Taylor, 1506 Hanson Circle. I'm a Payne County Tobacco Prevention Coordinator, and I'm also a Tobacco Settlement Endowment Trust grantee here in our city. And I wanted to agree with Dr. Harrington and Dr. Croft that Stillwater should be a Certified Healthy Community, but cannot even apply because of this one tobacco ordinance. To go over the rankings of ordinance, so to speak, based on the state's criteria, the state deems a gold standard ordinance as one that prohibits the use of smokeless tobacco products on all city-owned property, indoor and outdoor. And this would include chewing tobacco, snuff, and vapor products. This would meet the excellent Certified Healthy Community certification and up to $120,000 in grant funding that the city can use at what you would see fit on healthy initiatives. And as Dr. Harrington mentioned, 42 Oklahoman cities are already at this gold standard. The state deems the basic level ordinance as one that prohibits smoking on all city-owned properties indoors and outdoors. So this is taking it down a notch where it's no longer the smokeless tobacco, like Dr. Croft mentioned, but just smoking. And this would meet the basic Certified Healthy Community certification and up to $20,000 in grant funding to be used on healthy initiatives at the city's discretion. The ordinance that has been proposed does not meet the Certified Healthy requirements, nor does it qualify our city for any grant dollars. As Dr. Croft mentioned, about three out of four Oklahomans do not smoke. Therefore, tobacco-free policies are largely self-enforcing and can be properly enforced with a combination of adequate signage and community education. And this is somewhere that the, that TSET and that our coalition, our Payne County Live Well Coalition here, can assist with, with signage if we pass an ordinance that meets the state standards. Other Oklahoma cities that have passed such an ordinance, they handle infractions in the same manner as, as an alcohol or a litter complaint. As a mom, because I'm also a mom of two little boys, tobacco litter is gross. My husband is a high school teacher, Stillwater High School, and he teaches the leadership class. And I took his 25 students to a local park for 25 minutes, and we picked up this much tobacco litter. And this does not count the spit that is spit out from smokeless tobacco. It's disgusting. And it doesn't, it's not consistent with parks' messaging of community wellness and active lifestyles. Parks are a place where we take our children to play. It is a place where we go to run, where we go to cycle, where our pets get walked. It's not consistent with what Stillwater is about in terms of wellness. Also, our city-owned golf course here in Stillwater is one of six golf courses in our state with the prestigious title of a PGA family course. It's one of two city-owned public courses in Oklahoma with that title. And so we have a great chance to lead the way with a family course here in Stillwater to be tobacco-free. So to close, within cities, communities, and businesses that have adopted a tobacco ordinance, it is well-received, it's good for business, and more importantly, it's self-enforcing. This is an opportunity for Stillwater to promote the health of our community, saving lives in the process. The World Health Organization says there is really no good reason not to support tobacco-free. Incremental policies, such as the one that has been proposed, have been proven to be ineffective in order to go further afterwards. And I like to say what Dr. Harrington says, rip off the Band-Aid. Let's go for the gold. We recommend going for the gold standard, but if this ordinance passes as it stands, it can't stop here. We must continue to move forward in wellness. Thank you.
Next will take us down, we don't have any public hearings, it's based on the general orders. And the first is Library Board Request for Supplemental Budget Appropriation. Ms. Reynolds.
Good evening. I'm Linda Reynolds, Director at the Stillwater Public Library. And I'm here tonight on behalf of the Stillwater Public Library Board to request approval of supplemental budget appropriations to the 2015 fiscal year budget for our Library Technology Manager position. You have a copy of the job description for this position, which was approved by the Library Board at their October 28 meeting. The library has 83 computers maintained on two separate networks, one for staff and one for public. Support for these networks is provided by the city IT department, and it is estimated that 75% of one technician's time is spent maintaining the library's networks. The majority of this time is spent on the public network, which includes 50 computers, 13 servers used for internet access, filtering, imaging, and reservations, eight wireless devices which provide internet access throughout the library and meeting room facility, and 14 switches that allow for system and server communications. Additionally, the computer lab can require changes to its setup based on the needs of the group using the lab, and the filtering servers require continuous monitoring. Time is spent going through log files to detect problems with any of the servers and completing updates and corrections. Time is also spent on testing new software or operating systems for the servers to enhance their performance and dependability and replacing hardware failures with the least amount of downtime. Battery backup systems are checked weekly for proper functionality in the event of a power outage or power surges. And two video conferencing units and a variety of audiovisual equipment for meeting rooms require updates and maintenance. Just a little background on what's going on over there. As the library's technology needs continue to grow, as well as those in the IT department, it has been determined that a full-time, dedicated Library Technology Manager position is needed. In addition to providing the essential technology support already mentioned, this position would be instrumental in providing new technology services to the public, such as mobile applications, digitization, 3D printing, and gaming, as well, as well as improvements to computer systems, wireless access, and meeting room services used daily. Having a technology manager on site would help tremendously in resolving critical issues when they arise, such as disruptions to internet service or server failure, and also being on-site to assist library users that have complex computer or printing problems. This position could assist library staff with webpage management, development of technology plans, online catalog and database upgrades, firewall and security issues, federal E-rate discounts, and curriculum development for computer classes. A technology manager dedicated to the library would better understand the technology needs of the public and staff and be able to provide technological solutions that meet both current and future needs. In consultation with the HR department, the annual cost for this full-time position is $79,402. $56,160 is for salary, and $23,242 is for benefits. This is the maximum cost for this position based on the top salary step in this range and Family Plan A for benefits. This proposed position represents a 6.9% increase to the library personnel budget and a 0.3% increase in the city self-insurance fund. If this position were filled by December 1, the cost for the remainder of the 2015 fiscal year would be $46,319. At their meeting, the Library Board approved a one-time use of state aid funds in the amount of $24,000 for salary appropriations toward this position. A request is being made to the city council for the remainder appropriations of $22,319. You have a copy of the budget amendment request with appropriations into library personnel accounts and the city self-insurance fund. Thank you for your consideration of this request. Brad Stewart and Kristy Looper are also here to assist me in answering any questions that you may have.
Council, any questions, Ms. Reynolds?
I don't know if this would be better for you or for Brad, but you said 83 computers and a couple other things. I mean, can you break down time spent on, just a general time spent on those computers for this type of, I guess the manager, would there be a certain break? I mean, currently, is there a breakdown of how much time is spent? How often a person is over there working on those?
Um, we've currently estimated about 75% of one technician's time is spent either at the library or over at the city IT department, basically maintaining all of those systems. And I gave you just kind of a snapshot of what he's doing just to maintain the public, the public system.
So it's currently, the, the IT is doing it. No one in the library is doing any type of updates or anything on any of the computer equipment?
Not on the computers, no.
Okay. Hold on. Sorry, one more question. Is there anyone currently that is on staff that deals with, like, running out, I think you said there's, like, wireless and things? Is there anyone that deals with any of that stuff at all right now? Or is it all IT?
Um, it, the majority of it's IT. I mean, we have some staff that have taught themselves, you know, how to run some items, but mainly we reach out to the city IT department whenever we have, whenever we have a computer need, such as the ones I've described.
Okay.
Do you have a question?
I do. So does the city person that has been spending 75% of their time, maybe this isn't a question for you, I'm going to look at Dan also. Has something changed where the city can't provide this person anymore?
No, I really haven't. Brad Stewart's our Director of our IT. We have, we have more demands citywide on IT than we can handle. But Brad, I'll let you respond to it, and then I'll, I'll, there's another part of it I'll address after you finish.
Brad Stewart, I'm the IT manager. City currently is involved in several pretty large technology projects, with a few more coming in the near future. Past several years, this one particular tech has become more and more involved in the library's network, especially the public side, where we offer 50-plus public terminals. His time has just morphed into being dedicated more and more at the library. With these projects we have going and with the projects we have upcoming, we're going to need our full staff dedicated to not just, to all the projects that we have and not just one department monopolizing a lot of that technician's time.
One more question, and this might be for Kristy. You can sit there if you want and, and then decide. I think I heard you say, Linda, that 79,000 was the top salary for this position. So I'm wondering why you're asking for the top salary at this point?
Um, yeah, if you...
Kristy Looper, Human Resources Manager. There is a person who is currently performing these duties as the main tech, so they're familiar with the position. So their salary is what the request is for the amount, because the intent is to advertise. And if that individual is interested in the position, we didn't want to give you a lower amount in that range. If the person who's qualified, experienced, and in the position is the most likely candidate, we wanted to actually show the actual authorization of that person transferring. Does that answer?
Could a person with less experience do this job?
This position is that there is a range advertised, and so if we do advertise and that there is a person who's qualified with the qualifications of the position and the experience, then yes, there could be another technician in that range that would be qualified for the manager. So, yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Would it be better just to hire another IT person? Keep it under IT, Brad? I mean, we're already, I don't, I mean, from my standpoint, I feel like...
Before you answer, let me, let me tweak that question just, just a touch. And I may have Mr. Galloway chime in if I say something that is incorrect. And just, this is just for general knowledge, very specifically here. The library is different than every other department of the city, and that's set up by city charter, in that it's not the same as the Transportation Department or the IT Department, that the Library Board actually is the ones that are making those day-to-day decisions. And so it's a very unique arrangement where there are city employees, but they're not. And so it's a part of the city budget, but it's decisions made by somebody else. It's a very unique arrangement under the city charter, and it really puts us in extremely difficult positions, is my take on that. It's extremely unusual. And Mr. Galloway, here's a question for you. I can't think of another time where we've had a request for a budget amendment that wasn't based off of either a grant that's been obtained for a specific project or a massive change in condition. This, this seemed, this seemed unusual, and I may not be thinking of other examples.
Yes, yes and no. Now, you're correct in that the library is, is separate by charter. When it comes to the budget, the Library Board presents basically a request to the city to incorporate X dollars in their budget. And that, that is rather finite. In all of the other cities, departments combined, where we have multiple contingency funds, we have a lot of turnover, sometimes we have the ability, when we have vacancies, to eliminate a job and add a job, and we can, we usually have the flexibility within existing personnel structure to create staffing within the budget limitations to meet that. They have less flexibility there. So when they have
Okay.
...an identified need, they don't have any flexibility. They would have to come to the city council and ask for a change to appropriation. Now, I assume that the, this alternative wasn't really fully aware and developed at the time the budget request was originally made. I think IT, there's, there's a couple, we could have solved this another way. We could have possibly added personnel to IT to continue to serve the library. But, but again, if we're going to, if the demands of the library technology require one full-time person, rather than having them switch back and forth, it may be more simple to let them just simply operate under the direction of the Library Board. Probably has some efficiencies to do... Probably has some efficiencies to do that, rather than continuing to try to allocate portions of time from IT. So I think it probably creates a little bit of efficiency for the library, probably creates some more efficiencies for IT as well. So, you know, I think, I think from an overall perspective, it's probably a most cost-effective way to handle it. I would, I would suggest that it's an appropriate recommendation.
Is this the, Ms. Reynolds, is this the, if this is approved, the budget's amended, and the person's hired, what I just heard Mr. Galloway say, and I wasn't 100% confident from the report, this position would be wholly within the library, not another person at IT being assigned?
Right.
Okay. Is that, is your plan for next year's budget to just add this on to, or would you be reallocating other resources to take into account this change in condition?
Well, yes to both. I mean, we would be, this position would end up being part of our personnel request, but the library board would be looking at that in conjunction with our entire budget requests, including, you know, materials and services and personnel.
Okay.
I had the good opportunity to be on the library board for several terms, I think, two.
Six years, yes.
And I am very confident in the frugality of the approach to budget that Linda, as director, provides, and the conscientiousness of the board in spending money. And I think that if you, I don't, I can't speak to the amount of time that the IT person works on the computers, but if you ever go into the library, anytime, day or night, the computers are filled up. It's a huge service for the community and needs to be run well.
Let me just say, I'm not questioning your frugality or the, bringing this up. There's no question there. I just want to make sure that it, it should be under the library, not under IT. That's my only question. And I think you kind of answered that, and so I'm, I don't want you to think I'm thinking it's the wrong decision.
No, no.
If you think you need it, I'm not trying to tell you to do your job. I just want to make sure it's under the right department.
I understand.
Any other questions? Thank you. Okay. There is a recommendation from the library board for the budget amendment.
Motion to approve budget amendment? Correct?
Was that a statement?
Yeah, no, that was a, that was a me motioning to approve the staff recommendation.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I, I, no, we're good.
Motion to approve staff recommendation?
It's a Monday.
Okay.
Sorry.
Second.
Actually, I guess it wasn't a staff recommendation, it was the library board's recommendation.
Okay. Motion to approve library board recommendation.
Okay. We have a motion of second. And that is approved 4 to 0. Next on our agenda, is this Mr. McLinnie?
Just a side note, no one asked, but we did verify through finance that our, our projected revenues are such that we have sufficient funding to make that appropriation.
It was there. It was there.
Okay. John McLinnie, External Services Director. Staff's report and recommendation are based primarily on Councilor Nahara's original request was that we look into prohibition of tobacco use in parks and, public parks and playgrounds. We did discuss with representatives of OSU, the Payne County Wellness Coalition, and we looked at three potential options. One is the gold standard, which is to prohibit on all city-owned and controlled property. The standard is set by the state so that we can achieve their, their gold standard. Now, that would include anything that we control, rights of way, sidewalks, playgrounds, parks, city facilities such as city hall and the surrounding grounds, any city-owned parking lots, and things like that. We could prohibit on all park property, which would just include the parks themselves, which a lot of other cities have done. The third option that we looked at was to prohibit in parks or at special events within a certain distance of public gatherings and public gathering places, such as picnic shelters, playgrounds, ballfields, and any kind of a special event such as the Arts Festival downtown or something like that. Option three does appear to us to have, it provides adequate protection to the non-tobacco use in public, but at the same time doesn't create some of the enforcement issues that we're concerned about with the other two options. There's very little budget impact to any of these, other than signage and things like that, to make sure that the public understands what the rules are and where they can and cannot do this. Staff recommends that we consider an ordinance prohibiting tobacco use within 50 feet of facilities such as playgrounds, picnic shelters, ballfields, and public gatherings. And that is definitely open for discussion, and I think that's one of the reasons why Councilor Nahara kind of wanted to bring this forward, so that we could discuss further.
And John, we're, we're talking about tobacco and e-cigarettes, correct?
All tobacco products. Anything that's got any nicotine in it.
Okay. Do you want to discuss? You're looking at me like...
You're the one that originally brought this question up several months ago, and so I was...
Yeah, I mean, first off, thank you, John, Becky, Suzie. You know, we've been talking about this, and let me preference by saying, my choice, if it was a personal decision for myself, just no one else affected, I would go for the gold standard. However, with talking with John and Kristy and looking at our options, basically, we felt the best option to move forward with doing what, what I consider to be our duty to the community and to not overstep our bounds to the community is the option three. We feel like, or, you know, my main purpose was to make public areas, public gatherings a place that all people can enjoy. And I think that that's what we've achieved with number three. You know, John and I talk a lot about, for instance, you know, Becky brought up Lakeside Golf Course, great golf course. But in my mind, I don't think we have the right to sit and tell someone who's on hole 18 in the middle of nowhere that they can't smoke just because they're on a city-owned property if no one's around them. I just feel like, and this is my personal opinion, that we may be overstepping our bounds as elected officials, and we may be encroaching on people's rights, and so, but I'd like to get your input, and maybe I'm completely off. Maybe that's not correct, and maybe you guys have different opinions, but we feel like this is a good starting point and definitely a good place we think to be, and we could look down the road at maybe the community or citizens may think, hey, let's keep moving forward. I mean, this is going to be broadcasted, people are going to hear about it, and maybe they'll say, we want to move forward. We want to try to be that gold standard. I don't know until we at least get something on the books and move forward with what we think. So, conversation.
I think it's interesting that the recommendation is about, or the option three is preferred because of not creating enforcement issues. I mean, it doesn't seem like, I like Miguel's discussion better than enforcement issues. Adding just 50 feet to the ordinance makes it seem like, you know, and that creates more issues than just don't smoke or don't use tobacco.
Well, some of the, the things that we talked about is ballfields specifically. Within 50 feet of a ballfield is easy. We always have people there. There's always some, we don't have staff, city staff running those anymore, but we do have the Sports Association that we're working with running those. So there's always going to be somebody there who can help enforce that. Playgroundes are a little bit more, I guess, user-friendly in terms of tobacco use, parents and children, and people around, really, they don't have a tendency to use that kind of thing there anyway. The things that we were concerned about were things like, like Miguel mentioned, such as Lakeside Golf Course. So we have a lot of very big parks like Lake McMurtry, where it's not going to be easy to enforce beyond those specific areas in any way, shape, or form. Some of the other concerns that we discussed is this, if we went with the gold standard, it would create a change in working conditions for both of the city unions that, that we currently deal with, and that's going to require additional negotiations with regard to that. So that's another issue that we were concerned about. And then the self-enforcement, we don't necessarily want to put citizens in the position of having to be the ones to confront people who are violating this ordinance, and also, by the time a police officer could get there, assuming one was available to get there to enforce this ordinance, it's probably not going to be an issue anymore. So those are the kinds of things that we were concerned about.
Thank you.
I love the idea. I love what OSU has done. It's, OSU's been the leader and student-led, and I think that it's been accepted at OSU. I agree with Miguel and with Pat as far as issues that may be created with citizens in town, and I'm all for creating a healthier community, and I'm all for hearing more if citizens want this at some point. This is a good first step, and let's see how this goes.
If, if we do choose this as a first step, and the option three, do you have a timeframe for evaluating and deciding if you want to move forward to the, to the gold standard?
I don't think that we've really evaluated a timeframe at this point, but we could definitely do that as, as part of moving forward with this. The first thing we'll need to do is work with the city attorney's office to draft the wording of the ordinance and bring that back to council for consideration.
I would love to see a timeframe included, because it's just so easy for things to just drift away.
I think there's kind of two different, I think there were two different questions there that kind of got, got meshed. I interpreted, maybe I was, I was off. I was, I interpreted your question as maybe not this ordinance, but step two?
Right.
Was that? Okay.
Right. Timeframe for, for going beyond
Right.
The 50-foot limit.
Okay.
Right.
Then I, I misinterpreted, I apologize.
Yeah.
We don't have a timeframe in mind for that.
We could, we could, you know, you could certainly entertain that. For example, let's, let's say you, you chose to approve option three here, which was the 50 feet. You might include something to the effect that we would observe the results of this and complaints over, you know, and review it again within 12 months. And I think you'd go 12 months, so you can cycle through the seasons at the park and to see if it's being effective in protecting people. And if we see that it's not sufficient, then we could look at coming to another step. But I would suggest if you, if you adopted the recommended 50-feet limitation, that we revisit it, study it, I mean, keep some records of complaints and public reaction and report back to you next year at this time. That's a suggestion.
My son played ball in all the ballparks around here, and am I, I thought I saw signs that said no smoking. Am I incorrect?
There are, there were signs placed in all the ballparks several years ago, and we also added a, a non-tobacco use pledge to the back of our signup forms, but this was a voluntary effort within the Parks and Recreation Department, and there was no force of, of law behind it. And so we asked people to please comply, but if they didn't, there wasn't a lot that we could do about it.
And so what can, what would the penalty be?
That's part of what we'll have to work out with the city attorney as far as writing the ordinance is concerned, but it'll be one of those class A, B, C offenses and have fines tied to it, I'm sure.
It can't be more restrictive than what the state statute provides for, and I believe right now it's a $200 fine. I don't think they jail people for this, but we will, we will comply with whatever the statute allows, because we're not allowed to create a statute that is broader in scope than what the state has provided, because the state has preempted us on this issue.
What does OSU do?
I can't answer that.
Penalty-wise.
Yes.
Are you talking about penalty-wise? Or what is that?
So, it's mostly self-enforced. Again, you can go up to say, hey, do you know we have a tobacco-free policy? Oh, I didn't know that. When, when we added base, it was the same way. So that's, that's 99%. For those that aren't, there are pockets, small pockets, 1% or so, that it's, it's for students, it's a student conduct violation, and for employees, it's, I'm losing the words, but it's a conduct violation, but whatever the equivalent is for employees, I'm losing what the title is. But it's just, it's the same way you would handle any other type of policy infringement for any other thing.
Okay, so no state statute?
No, no. And we really, we haven't really needed it again, so if you have an example...
Yeah, I have a good example, yeah, of students who have come in and been dipping in class, and I am naive to that, and it takes me a while to pick up on it. And after a few weeks of ongoing behavior with a can, I finally figured it out. Baseball player asked him to please stop dipping in class, and he never did it again. But I told all of the other professors to make sure to watch out for the student who did try it in other classes and needed to be reminded multiple times. But that's all it takes, is just someone saying something, and as long as there's a policy in effect, if someone says something, that's enough. That, that is the enforcement. I'm not going to call OSU police to come into my classroom to help me run my classroom, right? Just like citizens wouldn't have to call the police to say, hey, that's not cool, let's run my kid, get out of there.
Thank you.
I would say too, that when the, it wasn't a policy, but it was administrative procedure in Parks and Recreation, and we had the no-smoking signs and we asked people not to do it, I don't think we had a lot of problem with asking to, we didn't need force of law to implement that.
That's kind of what Oklahoma City did. They have not actually passed an ordinance. What Oklahoma City did was adopted a resolution that basically makes it voluntary compliance, and, but they did make that park-wide as opposed to just within a certain number of feet. But if you wanted to look at something short of an ordinance, we could prepare a resolution for you to look at as well.
Would that qualify for the grant level?
Hang on, that, that should not be our motivation. Grant availability should not be the motivation, I, I don't think. If that could be a benefit, then so be it, but that, that cannot be our driving force. If this is something that city council believes is something that will benefit our community and is good for our community, then we need to determine the appropriate level and do it. And if there is disagreement by some, then they can disagree, whether it's because we went too far or didn't go far enough, because I'm willing to bet it'll be both. So it's one of those, what I'm getting from this recommendation, from this report and the recommendation is, tonight, there's really not an action to be taken. If we would like to give staff a, a solid direction to go, there's nothing to vote on. I can't vote on the, and a great example was, what, what would the fine be? Or, you know, we don't have an ordinance that we can hardcore say, boom, here's the rule. But this is a very natural, good next step in the conversation that's gone from absolutely no conversation to right here in a pretty quick timeframe when you're talking about a city. So, you know, things, things are moving along. What I think we need to do is, if you guys would like to give staff direction of, bring us back an ordinance that kind of accomplishes this recommendation, then we'll have something tangible that we can truly kind of tear up, tear down, piecemeal, put back together, and get the tweaks and the specifics where they need to be. That's where we can duke out 100 feet, 75 feet, 50 feet, 12 feet, whatever it is that you want. It can be every city park, it can be all the specifics we want to dig into. Right now, we can't get into that because we don't have it there to get into. So, do you guys want staff to come back with a recommendation? And if so, one, two, or three, where is the starting place? How's that for summing it up?
That's it, Tom.
Okay.
Yep.
It's basically what we recommend.
And that's what we need to know.
Say what, the thing that gets my attention? Say what? The thing that, that gets my attention is, by taking it to every city-owned facility, the, I know we haven't been able to do the research and the investigation into how does that impact on our HR issues, both union and non-union. We need, we need some of these answers before we can take it that far. We are different than the university campus in, in many respects in this area in that it's, even though they're both government, it's a different type of, of arrangement in a lot of ways. So before we can go full tilt on something, we got to have that answered. And so where, one, two, or three, to have staff put something together?
And you know, that may, you know, we recommend this three option, but that may be in our timeframe of next year when we're in negotiations. We could look at discussing with the FOP, uh, not the FOP, I'm sorry, the two labor unions we have of how, what their op, would they be well?
It may be something they want to throw in. I don't know.
Yeah, absolutely. And that's the thing.
The conversations haven't happened.
I think we all agree with that. That's something we, was one of our biggest holdbacks was we just didn't know, and we didn't feel like we had enough time. So I think if we get something on now, let's see how it starts working out. In our timeframe, we can put this next negotiations. Let's talk to the unions and see how they would approach those situations.
Can't we talk sooner than that? I mean, I, I thought that it sounded like you were saying, John, that we could have a conversation now with HR about how this might affect our union.
Oh, I, we, I mean, the conversation would need to start now.
Right.
I don't know if, I mean, that's, talk, that's one of the timeframe things. Do we want to hold up any action until that gets developed? I, I'm willing to bet, and this is a theoretical question, which I know is dangerous, but Mr. Dorman, to prohibit a otherwise lawful action with our, with, with a contract, is that something that has to be specifically negotiated?
Yes. If it's, if it's, if it's something that's considered a term or condition of employment, then in those instances, we generally have to negotiate those or.
We have rules and conditions, uh, general employment affecting those uses. And so if we're going to change those, it has to be negotiated for the two unions.
I think yes, the conversation can be happening currently. Do we want to wait for any action to, to get to there? That's kind of one of the questions.
Another, it's another reason why we were talking about first step.
Right.
In, in that this, this first step recommendation didn't interfere with those things and would give us some time to explore all those options.
And the option is three.
Wait, don't go.
Hold on, chief. Doesn't, it doesn't raise any of those issues to the extent that the other two might.
Yeah, that's right.
So my recommendation is going to be to have staff move forward with getting an ordinance together that prohibits within 50 feet and public gathering, ballpark, blah, all this. Option three. That's my recommendation. I don't know what kind of, we, what we want to move forward with that. If you all want to agree, what we need to do for that.
Is that a motion?
I, I would like to see a timeframe for evaluation.
Of the, the ordinance we come up with?
Mm-hmm.
We would need to get an ordinance passed first. You mean, or to get the ordinance?
The initial.
Oh, I would like within 30 days to have an ordinance.
Oh, well, that's not what I was saying. I, I would like to, I don't want to just say, yes, do number three, and then we just put it in the file and forget it. I, I want to be able to say, yep, I'm going to say okay for number three. And I want to know what kind of feedback the city gets, what kind of issues this raises. Um, and I want to reexamine it in six months or one year or whatever.
I would, you know, I would just, you know, and I, I don't disagree with that. Uh, Mr. Dorman, you correct me, but I think
We need.
if there is an ordinance presented, you agree on the contents, the ordinance, of the ordinance, when the motion is made on the ordinance, you could add in the motion that timeframe.
You could do that, or you could actually formally place it in the ordinance itself.
We could provide a place in the ordinance.
zoning ordinance.
Okay.
We wanted to bring them back for review.
But not a sunset clause?
Not a sunset. No, it's just a review clause. We did it with the land development code. There was a six-month review date on that.
We can, we could, if, if the motion, it were to pass, and Mr. Dorman, we could structure, uh, the first draft of the ordinance for the council's consideration with that in there. And then if you choose to discuss and change that number in the timeframe, you may do that. But we can structure it to have that provision in it.
So what's our timeframe to get an ordinance in front of us? That's my question.
How soon do you want it?
I said 30 days, but that, I don't know if, I mean, it's my understanding that we had the research done and we could move, basically just put.
You're talking about number, option three.
Yeah, it's, John and I, I believe, and I could be wrong, so correct me, but that we just needed to put City of Stillwater in, in ordinance and figure out, um, as far as enforcement and then move forward.
We have an existing, uh, smoking ordinance for restaurants and things of that nature. This is where we would logically place this new language, uh, since that is how it tracks in the state statute. Uh, we could have a draft ready for you as early as the next meeting, uh, certainly by the first of December without any difficulty.
I, I would be in favor of, by the next meeting to have that in front of us so we could discuss it and hopefully get it passed with the clause of the review. We would need to add that, correct?
If, if that's what you choose to do, if you want.
And you could put that in the ordinance we see next, next meeting of the six-month review period.
I can place it in there if that's what you, if that's the preference of the council.
Do you guys know what is being asked of you?
Yes.
Yep.
One, one thing though, in terms of the review, my preference would be, if the council's willing, is to make it one year. Because in order to have a, a really good look at what's going on in the parks, we need to go through the entire ball season, summer, et cetera. And so six months might cut us off before we really get.
That's, that's what I was anticipating, is that the draft would have the year, but if the council would always have the right to change that. But that'd probably be our recommended starting point.
And it can be six months. That, and more for a, keep it on the forefront as opposed to definitive answers.
Right.
Mayor, would you, would you entertain one moment?
One moment.
So if we do an ordinance, I'm looking at you, John, we have to stick to the state statute and people would be fined whatever.
Up to.
Up to.
You could, the state statute is the outer limits of what you can do. You can do anything up to what the maximum penalty is in that statute. You can also do less. You, instead of having a $200 fine, you could have a $100 fine. You could have a $10 fine if you chose to do that. Uh, if, in, the, the other point I made about Oklahoma City with them doing it via a resolution as opposed to an ordinance is they're trying to make it voluntary, and there is no, like the Oklahoma state policy, uh, there's not a, an enforcement mechanism, a, a specific enforcement mechanism, although at OSU, obviously, they use the conduct code and, and employee regulations to, to enforce it. But, uh, Oklahoma City has chosen a, a route that is trying to bring everybody into voluntary compliance. So it's, it's whatever works. I mean, we, we can fashion it any way within the parameters of the state statute.
I, it, an ordinance just makes me nervous because of, uh, the penalty. And, uh, we are a visitor destination, and I'm worried about visitors. I just needed to have that on record.
I, I think I would be, I am more excited about visitors saying they want to come to a community that promotes health. So I'm not worried on, sorry, I'm not worried, I'm not saying you're not wrong in that, but I would say just as a, a discussion on that, that I'm more excited about the fact of our people that promote Stillwater and, um, our CBB and whatever that can promote Stillwater being a healthy community, a place where families can come and play and enjoy things without certain things to worry about.
Would you guys entertain one public comment?
Sure.
Yes. You guys okay? Reverend Bartley? No relation, don't hold it against you.
Kansas City with a mayor named Bartley is a good city. I'm Reverend Michael Bartley. I'm the director of the Wesley Foundation here at Oklahoma State. Um, I live with the policy of Oklahoma State in a different way than Oklahoma State does. My building is directly across the street. I spend $600 a month cleaning up cigarette trash. Every single month from people that, um, are deported from the university to smoke across the street. I look really forward to a policy in the city that actually says publicly that we don't allow smoking on city property. Because the cost effect to those of us, I'm very leery about an idea of a 50-foot policy. It deports that trash to somebody else. That's the reality of a 50-foot policy or 100-foot policy or a mile policy. It just deports the trash to somebody else. And I would radically include you, encourage you to think about, in the state of Oklahoma, there are 42 cities that have gold standards. We would not be cutting a new pathway. We would be part of people that have already done this. And so I'd encourage you to think about that, the sense that 50-foot just means 50-foot further, somebody else has to clean up the trash. 100-foot, 100-foot further, somebody else has to clean it up. And that comes out of somebody's pocketbook every time they have to clean it up. And to be upfront, I'd rather you say no sidewalks are allowed and let it all be bumped, dumped on the parks and wrecks so that they can pay for it as opposed to me. That's my thoughts.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There aren't any parks close by, I guess.
Not, not on that one.
I mean, I, I understand his comment, but I, I think we just still have some things to, and I'm not going to say gold standard, but to meet that top thing that we would want to meet, or that would be everything, there's things we have to work out before we could get something like that done. And I don't want to delay a tobacco ordinance even longer. If we could at least get started on one, let's look at this in a year and try to get that top one done if we think it's something we should do. But I just don't think that's, we know that's not possible right now.
I would say too, that we did look at the, there are 40, there are a lot of cities in Oklahoma that have done this. There aren't a lot that are comparable to Stillwater in terms of size and conditions that, that we operate under. A lot of them are a lot smaller than we are. So we looked at that also, and that's just another one of the things that we had to factor into deciding how far we should go with this.
All right. Do you guys
Yes.
understand what's being asked of you?
Mm-hmm.
You?
Yes.
You're just looking blank at me, so I just making sure.
I was just acknowledging that.
We'll bring it back.
All right.
Further questions?
All right. Any other questions, Mr. McClain?
No.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, we don't have the resolutions. That's going to take us down to ordinances. And we do have one ordinance, uh, ordinance 3284. Mr. Dorman?
An ordinance admitting the employee retirement system defined benefit plan for retirees only of the City of Stillwater, Oklahoma, to incorporate the definition of spouse, providing for effective date, providing for repealer and severability, declaring an emergency.
Any question? This is only dealing with the, the defined benefit plan that we have?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Of which we only have two people still on that plan. We, we do not offer defined benefit to any of our employees anymore.
Does the defined
But there are two retirees.
Contribution have the same language already included, or is that coming down the pipe?
No.
Oh, it does not need, it's, it's already?
Because on a defined, uh, contribution plan, you can designate anybody as your beneficiary.
Okay. Gotcha.
So it's self-correcting.
Okay. All right. Yeah, any questions on ordinance 3284?
No.
Is there a motion on ordinance 3284?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion of second on ordinance 3284.
And that is approved four to zero. That's going to take us down to reports from office and boards. Anything from you, Mr. Dorman?
Nothing to report tonight, sir.
Mr. Galloway?
Just briefly, uh, something we haven't talked about at the meetings. We, uh, we do have a little survey out publicly. It's been published, uh, in the Stillwater News Press last Sunday. It's going to be published again this Sunday. Uh, it's on our website. We've tried to get it out through reminders, through our social media as well. Uh, just, just a reminder, there's 19 topics on there. This is not intended to be a statistically accurate analytical survey. Um, I've been meeting with a group of citizens off and on over the last few years. Topics keep coming up, and, um, the group took a little survey on 30 or 40 issues. Uh, it was kind of interesting talking with council and said it would be just, let's just get the pulse on, of the community on a few issues. So we got 19 issues out there. They're not recommendations. They're not proposals. They're just items that came up in discussion through the citizens' group, and it's a quick poll to say, hey, what do you think about this? You like it? You don't like it? Don't care. But just take a few minutes. It gives us some idea. We've had well over 2,000 people already take the survey. Uh, it'll be out there this Sunday. It'll be open through, online through November the 5th. And again, um, if we find some of those 19 topics that there's a lot of public interest in, then I think the council, and we may want to get with the public and open those issues up to more discussion and get into some detail. Right now, they're just general concepts, but really appreciate people weighing in, and there's places for comments on there as well. So, um, take a chance. If you haven't done it yet, fill it out before this Wednesday, and, uh, we'll be reporting back here on the results.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
And I'm looking forward to not only the results of that, but, uh, where we take it from there as we dig in deeper. That's good stuff. All right, council. Does council have anything? Any miscellaneous items from council? I had to look real fast to see who had radio.
Who is it?
It's not you.
Okay.
Uh, it actually would be Vice Mayor Weaver has radio, so, uh, let, I've been willing to.
Does he?
Well, it may be a phone interview. So, uh, I'll check with him, and we'll make sure we have a representative at radio tomorrow. 8:15, KSPI, 780 AM.
Take his.
If you do it, okay. I may be talking to you later about covering that. Uh, and then we got last home Pioneer football game this Friday night. So let's, uh, have folks show what.
Stadium night also, so, uh, we hope we can get a good crowd. There's food trucks and face painting, and, uh, it's not just for the kids.
Not just for the kids.
Don't forget to vote tomorrow.
A few pucks on Franklin.
Voting. Have to do that.
And Franklin's closed off. It's very safe. And, uh, last home game, and if they win, they go on to playoffs. So, good reason to come out and, uh,
Sure.
It's a tobacco-free campus, too.
Yes, it is. And then, uh, you were getting ready to.
Well, I said it. I said, don't forget to vote tomorrow.
That's right. Tomorrow's, tomorrow's election day, so if you haven't voted already, uh, be sure and go out and vote. Uh, we do not have any city races, but we have local races as well as the state races as well. So get out there and vote. Very important. Uh, I heard a comment this weekend that I think is very, uh, important, which is, uh, yes, you should go vote, even if you plan on voting someone that you know will not win. That makes it even more important to go vote. To go vote for the person that you think is the right person, even if you don't think they're going to win. So, get out there and do your job, folks. All right, we don't have any appointments, and I'm still working on that. We will be having appointments coming, Patty, I promise. Okay, and that is all on city council agenda. Is there a motion to adjourn city council?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
A motion of second to adjourn city council. And that is approved four to zero. City council's adjourned. We will call to, I say, do you want me to give you guys a minute? We've got CED, or CEDA meeting. Do you want to give you guys a, a minute to break, or do you want to wait for the CEDA meeting? Are you ready to go? Okay, I'll give you a minute to, before I call the next meeting to order.
We do have a Stillwater Economic Development Authority meeting for this evening, so we'll call that to order. And we have one item on the agenda, consider contract with Red Dirt DMO, Inc. for marketing promotion of visitors to City of Stillwater. Reporter, Ross?
We've, uh, been negotiating with, uh, a new We've been negotiating with a new corporation in town, Red Dirt DMO Incorporated. Mr. Doug MD is the president, as I understand, and we've gone back and forth and talked about a contract, and if this contract were approved, we'll actually close on the effective date a city operation, and no longer be a city department of tourism. Those employees would no longer be city employees. I'm assuming that DMO, Red Dirt DMO would employ those same people, and they would perform the CBB function for CETA, for the city, under contract as a private operation in accordance with the contract. That's that, and Mr. MD is here.
Correct. I'm Doug MD, 2203 South Range Road. I am the chairman of the board for Red Dirt DMO, and I would answer any questions you have. One point I would point out is that under the current ordinance, you have an advisory board to the CBB and visit Stillwater. It's my understanding, and it's that advisory board's understanding, that we would basically dissolve and the responsibility would be put onto the Red Dirt DMO. I don't know what procedure that would require, since it's an ordinance-driven thing, but I believe in the ordinance, the council has the power to change any rules except for the actual tax amount.
Yeah, the tax rate, yeah. Okay, so you don't, we don't, with the new contract, with the new organization that's running this, you don't believe we need the advisory board?
Right. I believe we would take over that because we're going to, all grant requests or sponsorship requests, we're going to recommend to the council or to CETA, and then you will make the decision on those.
Okay. Mr. Dorman, there's a lot of confusion on the ordinance. Is there, what, two ordinances?
Yes.
Connected here?
There's an ordinance that establishes the room tax, and then there's a second ordinance that establishes the convincing and visitors board. And so, what Mr. MD is alluding to is that we would do an ordinance that would eliminate the visitors' board, but the room tax ordinance would still remain in full force and effect.
Not getting near that ordinance, just the other ordinance.
Just the one that deals with the advisory board. And then, as he mentioned, the request for any type of special funding or anything would come directly to CETA. CETA would essentially step into that role.
All right. Somebody have any other questions for Mr. MD? Nope. Okay. I don't have any, I don't have any questions. I appreciate the direction that we're heading with this. It's a very unique arrangement. It's not a public-private partnership. It's not a specific, you know, hiring someone to build a road. It's a very unique professional service arrangement that we're putting together to make sure we've got the right people doing the right job, and that's the direction we're going with it, and we appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. All right, we've got a contract that is there. There has, there have been quite a few negotiations back and forth for quite a period of time. One thing about this, and let me pull this up. Contract as worded, really, well, I'm just going, I just want to read these numbers. I think this is important because what we're doing is we're taking it, we're kind of going not full circle, that's not the right way to put it, but when, in approximately 1985, when the hotel tax was passed, the city hired the Chamber of Commerce to run the CBB operations. And all hotel tax collected was allocated towards that contract. In January 2011, the city and the chamber ended that contract and then brought it in the CBB operations in-house as a department of the City of Stillwater. At that point, when it was brought in-house, the, if you take the total amount of taxes that had been collected since it began and remove the total amount of expenses allocated to those tax-collected, there was a net of approximately $59,773 additional tax that was collected, then was spent. In the time, the just over two and a half, I guess, I can't do much math now, two, three years that it has been a department of the city, if you do that same math, the amount collected as compared to the amount expended, that net that is there has increased to just over $868,000. Lots of reasons for that. We have more hotel rooms now than we used to, as one example, but things being run, being run well. We have not spent all the money that has been brought in. This contract, the way it's set up, is set up that 51% of the approximate estimate of the hotel tax is going to fund this contract, plus utilizing the excess that has been, that has built up over the last three years. That's what's funding this contract. Ongoing, that 51% of the hotel tax is the basis, or should be the basis for the conversation for ongoing, by utilizing the amount that's built up for a new entity to get going so that they can do the best service that can be done for the promotion of our community. I know our numbers, and that's always confusing, at least to me. So, are there any questions on those numbers I threw out?
I wish you'd say that one more time.
No.
Three times fast.
I cannot do it three times fast.
Okay, so you said, going forward, it's like startup money to help this new entity for the next, how many years?
It's a three-year contract.
Okay. Okay, that's what I wanted, that was my question. And then, it uses, Red Dirt uses the 51% hotel tax?
Currently, that is part of the funding of this contract.
Plus the...
51% of the current collection of hotel tax, year to year, for the next three years. In a nutshell, what you're pointing at and looking at this contract, this contract is saying that the allocation of hotel tax, 51% is for marketing, the remainder is for the creation of things to be marketed to. That's what that allocation is saying.
Okay.
All right?
Good deal for Stillwater.
All right, any questions on this? Okay. Is there anything to flip back over, how's it worded?
Need a motion for approval.
Sorry, a motion to approve the contract with Red Dirt DMO.
I make a motion to approve the contract with Red Dirt DMO.
Second.
A motion and a second. That is approved four to zero. Are there other items on this agenda? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
That is approved four to zero. We are adjourned.